And to order at six oh one and we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we need to do a roll call. Eric's here, Dawn here. And Kim is here. All right, a few announcements. This meeting is recorded by the local scene. Anyone intending to make an audio or video recording of this meeting should notify the Chair at this time. Financial assistance applications are available at the town's website or by calling the Selectman's office. For anyone interested in volunteering, there are several vacancies on various committees and boards. To see a complete list of the openings, please visit our website at Kingston MA.gov. We have a few upcoming events. The FY twenty-five recycling and disposal center sticker sales started on June third. And these are available at the Highway Department window on Monday through Friday from seven AM to three PM. Weekend hours will begin on June twenty-second from eight AM to four PM through July fourteenth excluding holidays. The Kingston Farmers Market will run on the first Sunday of each month through October from ten AM to two PM at Gray's Beach. And music nights at the beach begin tonight and will be multiple dates throughout the summer. Please check the town website for more information. Town buildings, Town Hall, Library, Council on Aging, Highway Barn, and the Transfer Station will be closed on Wednesday, June nineteenth in observation of Juneteenth Day. Please check our website for any additional information. And at this time, if anybody would like to speak at open forum, sure, Jeanne Lindis-Norman.
Thank you. I just wanted to add on to the sticker purchases. This year, the Recycling Committee is providing a handout on our solid way, our organic waste disposal. So we're hoping more people will become familiar with this option at the Transfer Station. And we're also providing a four-way type of can opener, bottle opener. We opted not to go with scrapers or shopping bags this year simply because of the cost. We are in the process of trying to purchase and establish our swap shop again. So we are, we're being cautious with our spending until we find out if we get a grant for that. But we do encourage everyone to participate in the organics collection. It's a significant portion of your trash and will certainly reduce the amount that we're sending down to CMAS, which of course costs the town per ton. Thank you.
Thank you. Chief.
Evening, honorable members. Ms. Tucker. Just a couple of general announcements to update the board. Gotten a lot more familiarity with the inner workings of the Police Department and the town. For the record, I have no regrets about coming here. This is still, I said it before, it's a great town. It's a good place to be. Typically, a new police chief would follow the International Association of Chiefs of Police playbook with things that a new police chief should do. We recently completed the evidence audit and property room audit. And it passed with flying colors. This is an area of high vicarious liability. The people that maintain that, the detective lieutenant, the detective sergeant, and one other sergeant that has a collateral responsibility of maintaining evidence, passed with flying colors. The only recommendation of the audit is additional lighting in a particular area, the property room. That's kind of dark, so you don't want to risk losing property because there's no lights. I recently reached out to Mr. Kuko from Facilities and he's got the electrician working on, looking at the job and he's going to take care of that. We will be developing a traffic safety officer's position and kind of get a better picture of what that looks like. So the goal is to create a member of the department who's a subject matter expert that can focus on an area using tools like, you know, a J-Mar traffic unit study to determine exactly what's going on and what the town should do or the board as commissioners should do if anything. We will be applying for a grant through the Department of Mental Health for a staff clinician. I'm going to be seeking advice from council about whether or not the board should give me a green light on that unless somebody on the board happens to know. But if that is needed, that will be a future agenda item request. What that will do is create a full-time clinician for mental health and substance abuse as a town employee. And it's funded by the Department of Mental Health on a revolving grant. It recently got extended for further applications for a ten-year period. It's a lengthy process. I hope to have an update for you within the next month. I did meet with the Main Street and Landing Road Traffic Group. They're concerned about issues in the area. We'll have a more formal discussion and it'll be an agenda item request when we meet with the board. But we did meet and it's just me informally updating the board that we had a healthy discussion between myself, the member of the Department Lieutenant who came with me, my recent reach out to Mastard. We'll have a better picture of what we can do and have a public discussion about that. And I would be remiss if I didn't thank the board and other committee members for their support of the initiatives that we've already embarked on and that we'll be looking at in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Anybody else from the public wish to speak? Do we have anybody online? Doesn't look like it. All right, so we will move on to our appointments. First one is a request from the Agricultural Commission to use a townhouse property for September twenty-ninth, 2024. The Agricultural Commission is requesting the use of the townhouse property on Sunday, September twenty-ninth. Town administrators suggested using the Gray's Beach property rather than the townhouse. However, the Commission prefers the townhouse property. And I'm assuming you're here to speak.
Good evening. John Webble, a member of the Agricultural Cultural Commission. We'd like to use the townhouse property again this year, September twenty-ninth. It worked last year. In fact, maybe Dawn could speak a little bit to that. He was involved.
Yeah, no, the property worked well. I think the, I think the issue obviously is the Veterans Memorial now. That's the difference between this year and last year, so.
Yeah, I think, I'm wondering if we could just use the property here but then not the front part of the, the building.
I, I assume you need all the same spaces you needed before, right?
Yes, and personally, I think that, you know, we can easily work around the Veterans Memorial. I think it might be an important addition to the, to the fair and, you know, help educate people, show them what, what's been done. I, I don't think, I don't think it's harmful in any way. And, you know, I wasn't there last year, so I can't speak directly to it. But apparently there was enough space that worked out very well according to, to everyone who attended and, and the rest of the committee that organized it. The drawback to Gray's Beach is parking. And if it's a nice Sunday afternoon and people are at the beach, parking will become a huge issue. We've got plenty of parking here and that's one of the reasons that we, we like using this space. It, it worked well.
How many parking spots do we have here on this property?
More than Gray's, but I don't know if it's, I don't know how much more, but it's definitely more than Gray's. The only, the only concern that I would see really is, and I'm not sure if this is one of Keith's concerns was, because this is, that's going to be finalized in November, right? The memorial?
Earlier.
Earlier. So if there's, I don't know if there's going to be any construction equipment present at that timeframe, which is September twenty-ninth, and that would be kind of the only, if that stuff's here, that stuff's here. It's not going to get moved for this event. That's the problem. So I don't know if that's... Kim, I don't know if you have any thoughts on it or?
I mean, the Veterans Memorial folks reached out to me, a few of them, and they, they do have concerns about where the project will be at that time and whether or not there's enough space. I, I can't speak to that because I don't exactly know how much of that will be walkway and benches and things based on the conceptual drawings. So I guess I have reservations having it at the townhouse without having a better understanding of where everything would take place.
Is it a problem if we block off the front of the building?
They wouldn't have enough space for all the animals and all the events that they had, at least based on last year.
Yeah, if I, if I could just address some of those concerns. We did have some, some, the animals set up along the driveway here. It worked very well. But there was a, a good amount of space that we didn't utilize back there. Certainly, the front lawn was not fully, fully used. There was obviously lots of space there. We have not heard yet from the junior class as to whether or not they're going to have their cow plop in conjunction with ours. They did take up a, a small amount of space. I think what's really nice here is that we've got all the parking. We had probably between three and four hundred people attend the fair. And we know that we can't accommodate that at Gray's Beach. So we think that there's more than adequate space here, and I agree with John. I think this would be a nice way for members of the public who may not be familiar with our memorial to, to view it for the first time and perhaps come back at a different time to utilize it and reflect. So we feel that this was really an ideal setting. And certainly having the, the restrooms available was, was quite valuable. And all the parking where our vendors, our food vendors could sit.
When, when does, or actually I'll let Kim, Kim add her hand up.
Kim, yeah, you had a, did you raise your hand?
I'm having a little trouble hearing her. Oh, sorry, I'll speak up. If our biggest concern is parking, would we ever be able to do it at one of the schools? Because the schools have significant amounts of parking. They also have some green spaces that are shaded. So would any of the schools be an option since this takes place on a weekend?
I don't know what we'd have to go through to get permission from the schools to hold an event like this.
So here, here's a better question. When are you starting to advertise the location of the event?
As soon as possible. We want to solicit our vendors as soon as we possibly can.
Because my, my, my personal concern would be if there's machinery or something. I don't, I don't necessarily think the Veterans Memorial being here is a problem. But if they're going to have equipment here, then that's a.
What's the timeline for completion?
And I thought it was like around September that they planned on.
We expect it earlier than that. It may be as early as the middle of July.
To be finished? As, sorry, they're, they're speaking from the audience. Do you have the?
I can't, I can't hear her at all.
Do you mind going up? Sorry.
Bob Ketter. It could be completed as early as the middle of July and most likely will be completed by that point in time. We're having a meeting on the seventeenth with the primary contractors for the sidewalks and the rest of the patio and stuff like that. And that will give us a real good definition of, we are pushing them as hard as we can given that some of them are donating their time and efforts to the cause. So that is the biggest consideration. Other places I thought of, if you think in terms of parking, Opochinski Field Complex is a, is another.
They won't allow that. We, we, I, I talked to the Rec Commission. They don't want animals on those fields.
I guess, I guess my, my question is, what is the, what is the memorial's concern having an event? I mean, we're, we'll still, I don't see why there's an issue having events here as long as this is done.
If the cow plop drop is a component of this, we're concerned about having some activity like that as close to a memorial for veterans. Same concern we would have had with it up at, if we'd been involved with the Civil War monuments up on the Old Town Green. It's just one of those things that seems incongruous to a Veterans Memorial.
I, I think if we could keep the, if we could rope off an area and keep the animals away from the general area of, of the memorial and any of the finished area out there, I would think that would meet our goal. Keeping them away from it and maybe not doing it, the, the plop drop out in front.
Yeah, I mean, based on the size it was last year, that could definitely be brought around to the side too. But is there, Kim, I saw you had a hand. Sorry.
I was just trying to say, I think it's more about conceptually having animals pooping in front of a memorial. I think that's.
Well, I mean, it would be, yeah, no, I, I get that, but, but also on the same token, we shouldn't abandon being able to use this space because we put a memorial here. That's, you know, that's, if that's the case, that was poor planning. And I don't see why that one item, the cow plop thing, couldn't just be moved to the side property.
If the cow plop could be moved to another location, I think we would have a different attitude towards the agricultural fair being held on this property.
I mean, it would be there, but it would be the side of the building. They had a, before they had like the agility course over there last year, I think.
Is it on grass?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
You can't put the animals on tar because it could be way too hot for the animals to be sitting on tar all day.
That could engender some really interesting agility tricks.
Yeah, I don't see why that couldn't get moved.
No, obviously we would be very respectful of the memorial. And they didn't take up near as much space as we thought they were going to last year, so I think there's adequate space there.
So do we think we, we would be okay, Dawn, Kim, with roping off a, obviously we'll have to figure out what would be acceptable? What sort of an area out front that would be roped off or fenced off or if we even have any sort of temporary fencing?
For the, they roped their own thing off. They roped it off last year. They weren't just free grazing across, oh, yeah. Everything was fully controlled. Yeah, all the animals were contained.
What I meant is rope it off so to keep people out, not people, but animals out of.
There's no question we do.
The only, I believe last year, the only animals was the cow plop out on the front. Everything else was on the side. So they could just get moved to the side too. And I, I totally understand that. What I don't like is being able to, is losing this space for use because of the memorial, which sounds like if that's the only real concern, then I don't, I don't have a, personally, I don't have a problem with that, but.
I would like to see sort of a concept of how that would be mapped out. That's before I would want to vote in favor of it. Just, I just want to know what they have in mind kind of map form. But if, I mean, if you guys want to vote it now, that's, that's fine. I just personally would like to see how they plan to fit everything in that they plan to do.
So we, we meet Tuesday next week, right?
We do.
Would you be able to give us just a rough outline based on last?
I can draw one for you in about two seconds if you really need it.
I mean, it would, I mean, we'll be able to wait till Tuesday, so it's a formal on the meeting, on the agenda? And then there'll be five of us too, so it'll have a bigger, stronger support on it. Yeah, I mean, based on what I remember, how it was set up last year, I don't see why we couldn't fit it in over there and that solves all those problems.
There's more than adequate space. Yeah. I think the other thing we want to point out is that we, we chose this date because Patriots will be playing on the West Coast that day. The game doesn't start till four, so we'll be done. Last year we got shorted because we had this huge storm came through.
Yep.
So everybody had to flee in pouring down rain. So we're, we're hoping the weather will be kind to us this year. And we're, we're hoping to have even more vendors. You know, we've been talking to some of the vendors at the Kingston Farmers Market. They've, they've expressed interest, so we hope to have something for everyone. And certainly we'll map it out so that there is no infringement on the memorial.
Okay.
Sounds good, so we'll.
And you guys can obviously be remote Tuesday. That's not a problem. You can be remote Tuesday. That's not a problem if you don't want to come back in.
Yeah.
But, yeah, so we'll move it to Tuesday?
Yep, sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, the next item is a, a proposal by the Agricultural Commission to use the townhouse gazebo for produce sharing program by residents. We, we did this last year out front. This would allow home gardeners a way to share their bounty with others who may not be able to grow their own fresh produce. They're requesting the gazebo at the townhouse to place a small bookcase where residents can leave extra produce for others to pick up. Then the agricultural, members of the Agricultural Commission would monitor the produce on a weekly basis to remove all spoiled items. They anticipated dates for this program would begin in late June and end mid-September. Did you want to speak to that?
Well, I think that pretty much summarizes it. It was our first year. It did get off to a bit of a slow start. But we did have some participation. We anticipate doing a little bit more to promote it this year so that more people are aware of it. We feel that it's an awfully good location because the produce is still in fresh air, but it's protected by being in the gazebo. We can put a, we put a bookshelf in there with containers so people can place their items in there. And we hope that if more people participate, we can get out something on Facebook saying, hey, there's a, you know, ton of zucchini over here, you know, people want to come and get it. I did talk with the health agent. I understand that she again raised some concerns about animals. I did explain that these, this produce is grown outside on the ground where animals can get to it at any time. And that by having it in the gazebo, that certainly does protect it quite a bit from animals being attracted. I'm not aware of a lot of animals that are looking for tomatoes or zucchini, so I, I think we're okay. I think we're okay and would appreciate being able to offer this to the community again this year.
So the only thing I just want to make clear that Town Administrator did send an email about this, that the health agent continues to support, to not support using the gazebo due to attracting animals to the produce, as Jeanne said. There were times they said that the town staff last year had, had to remove spoiled items from the gazebo. And I know you said that the commission members would be coming to check it periodically.
I was not made aware last year that there was any problem. I think everyone in town has my phone number as well as my email. So that if there is an issue, certainly contact me immediately. We'll address it right away. We do not want to have spoiled produce out there. That doesn't support our program.
All right, any, any questions, Kim or Dawn? Now, does anybody want to make a motion?
I move to approve the request of the Agricultural Commission to use town property for a produce sharing program for residents.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Dawn, I. Sorry.
You go first, Eric, usually.
Yeah.
Eric, I.
Dawn, I.
We're getting used to the new system, right, guys? I said, Kim, I.
All right.
Three, zero.
All right.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we'll have that little plot plan for you next week.
Sounds good. And you don't have to come in if you don't want to. You could just send us an email with that. Yeah.
Yeah, I think the, if, if, if you remember how it was set up last year, I don't see why you can't just use the exact same thing, but just put them there where the, so.
Thank you. All right, appointment number three. This is a request for reinstatement of ARPA funds for the Fire Department. At a recent board meeting, we had rescinded the approval of remaining balance of previously approved ARPA projects. One of the projects, anticipated Fire Department COVID expenses, had the remaining balance of twenty-four thousand, one hundred and twenty-two dollars and eighty-seven cents mistakenly rescinded. The Fire Department needs those funds and Keith is, our Town Administrator is requesting the board approve twenty-four thousand, one hundred and twenty-two dollars and eighty-seven cents be approved again for the same purpose, for anticipated Fire Department COVID expenses. Any questions, comments, or a motion?
I move to approve providing ARPA funds in the amount of twenty-four thousand, one hundred and twenty-three dollars to the Fire Department COVID-related expenses.
Second.
All right, and a roll call vote. Eric, I.
Dawn, I.
Kim, I.
All right, that's unanimous. Thank you. All right, additional items. This is a quick one. Set special fall town meeting date. There's a need to hold a special fall town, fall town meeting this year. The primary reason for the meeting is to present MBTA zoning amendment for voter consideration. The Water Department may also have a funding request to construct a new well on the property that has been acquired for that purpose. The proposed date is Tuesday evening, November nineteenth. The auditorium has been tentatively reserved and all necessary staff are available. So unless anyone has a question, I'd entertain a mo, motion.
I move the Board of Selectmen approve the proposed Tuesday, November nineteenth, 2024 special fall town meeting date.
Second.
All right, and all those in favor? Eric, I.
Dawn, I.
Kim, I.
All righty. The next item is Appointment to Affordable Housing Trust. We're going to table this vote for next week. And instead, we're going to announce this position and ask the people who are interested to submit a letter of interest. But basically, oh, I'm sorry. I'm looking at the wrong one. Sorry. Appointment to Affordable Housing Trust. So the Board of Selectmen need to appoint a board member to the Affordable Housing Trust. If, if we have a board member that's willing to serve, then the following motion should be made. Should we wait? I wonder if we should table this for Missy and Tyler to be here unless one of you has an interest in joining the Affordable Housing Trust?
I mean, we could just appoint one of them. No, I say, I say we should wait personally, but.
Yeah, that's fine. We can have a discussion with the full board.
All right, sounds good. All right.
So put that to Tuesday.
Yeah. We could just do that right down the line, right? Request to, the next item is a request to approve end-of-the-year line item transfers. We have several transfers being requested. Finance Committee will review these transfers. Actually, they have reviewed the transfers at their June fifth meeting. It says the Town Administrator will update the board on the FinCom.
Carl.
I, I watched the, I watched the Finance Committee meeting, sorry, Eric.
Yep.
I watched the Finance Committee meeting and these were all approved unanimously, I believe. Tricia can correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I don't believe there were any that were not supported unanimously. They had some questions, which they got addressed by Keith and Carol, and Carol's on here if I'm misrepresenting that. But that was my, that was my notes for watching that meeting.
We got a nod from Carl in the audience.
Thank you, Carl.
So I, oh, sorry. No, I was just going to say, we have, we have, we have quite a few transfers. I don't think I need to go through and read all of these. They are in our packet and they will be on, online.
Eric, can I just add just a couple of comments?
Yes.
If people are interested in learning more about what these are about and, and why, I would highly recommend watching the Finance Committee meeting from June fifth. They did go into each of these and there were some objections from the Chair on maybe some over, overspending in some categories. Or he's there if he wants to explain it in his, his own words, but I think it's worth, it's worth the watch if anyone hasn't, hasn't watched that meeting.
All right. Carl, did you want to address anything?
No.
No. Okay.
I, I move the Board of Selectmen approve the transfers presented in the packet.
Second.
All right, all those in favor? Eric, I.
Dawn, I.
Kim, I.
All right, that's unanimous. All right, now this one is the one I'm suggesting that we table. Appointment of a tax title custodian. We do need to appoint a tax title custodian. We've got a couple, we, we were going to make that appointment tonight, but somebody else in the community had voiced their interest in this appointment as well. So what we're going to do is allow anybody who's interested in being appointed as a tax title custodian to submit a letter of interest to the Board of Selectmen. And then next Tuesday, we will review any letters of interest and we will, those, those people will be able to speak. And then we can make a, an appointment at that meeting.
Is there any time requirement? Yeah, there probably is. So we'll probably have to wait one more meeting, I would guess.
Well, I think we just need to make sure that, say, who is getting them? So who are they sending it to, right? And by when? Because if it's going to be in the meeting packet, we need to have it before noon on Friday, which doesn't give people a whole lot of time, but you, I mean, it doesn't need a vote. I just think we need to say who. Are they emailing it to Tricia?
Yes, and your email is.
Are they emailing it by Thursday at five? Like, what's our timeframe?
Yeah, Pete, Pete Tucker at Kingston MA.gov. And I would say today is Tuesday. Does it need to be in our packet on Friday or can they be added Monday or Tuesday? I, I would say at the end of the day on Friday, just to give some time.
The people have already reached out, right? So my guess is Thursday at five PM is fine and just make sure they reach out. Or, and then they'll be here on Tuesday to be, to be interviewed or whatever.
That sounds good.
So if anyone else is interested, they have to email a letter of intent to Tricia, Pete Tucker at Kingston MA.gov by Thursday.
Thursday at five PM.
Thirteenth at five PM.
Correct.
Yep.
And I don't think we need to vote on that.
No.
Okay. Okay. The next item is to add an additional signer for, for the weekly warrant. So pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter forty-one, Section fifty-two, in the absence of the member designated, the chair of the, of the board, we can designate one member as a substitute in the event of the absence of the designated member to act. The Selectmen may vote at an open meeting to designate one of its members as a substitute in the event of the absence or inability of the designated member to act. There can only be one member designated to act at the board at any one time. Therefore, the vote, the, the board's vote should clearly indicate that the backup may only act when the designated member is unable to do so. So I think right now I'm able to go in on Thursdays to sign the warrant, but if I'm on vacation or something that I can't, then we, we should have a backup. So is anybody here willing to perform this task, Kim?
So unfortunately, Wednesday and Thursdays are the only days I can't do because that's the.
Well, that's good because you can also do it first thing Friday morning.
Right, that's fine. If that's the case, then I'm fine doing it. I don't really care. I just can't do it Wednesday, Thursdays because I'm in the city, so. So it's up to you if you.
If you, if you're volunteering for it, I'm fine with that.
Sure.
All right. Kim, do you want to make the motion?
Can I just also point out that if both of you are unavailable, it just needs three signatures. That's all.
Yeah, okay.
Um, I move to add Donald Alkem bright as an additional signer of the weekly warrant in the event that the chair is unable to do so.
Second.
All right, all those in favor, Eric, I.
Dawn, I.
Kim, I. I thought Dom was going to vote no.
I said reluctantly.
All right, so this next item, I think I want to postpone this as well because this is a discussion on creating a working group for privately owned transfer station. I, I think it'd be better if we had Tyler and Missy here so that they could also express interest if they wanted to be part of that. If there's no objection, then I'll just keep going.
It's fine with me.
Okay. Authorization of transportation infrastructure funds. Pursuant to Massachusetts Statute twenty twenty-two, Chapter one seventy-six, Section twenty-seven, the town of Kingston has received the sum of $3,471.80, which represents Kingston's twenty twenty-three's municipal assessment of the transportation infrastructure, infrastructure distribution. These funds are to be used by the town to address the impact of transportation network services on municipal roads, bridges and other transportation infrastructure, or any other public purpose substantially related to the operation of transportation network services in the city or town, including but not limited to the Complete Streets Program established in Section one of Chapter nine oh one of the general laws and other programs that support alternative modes of transportation. The balance remaining in the fund is $5,977.50 and can be used to fund road maintenance. Any comments, questions, or a motion?
I move the Board of Selectmen accept Kingston's twenty twenty-three transportation infrastructure distribution in the amount of $3,471.80 and authorize the use of the balance of the fund in the amount of $5,977.50 for road improvements in FY twenty-five.
Second.
All those in favor, Eric, I.
Dawn, I.
Kim, I.
Excellent. All right, next item is to request to declare town property a surplus. The wastewater superintendent is requesting that the board deem the following town property a surplus, a two thousand nine Ford Escape.
I move the Board of Selectmen declare the two thousand nine Ford Escape from the wastewater department as surplus and approve this to go to auction.
Second.
All those in favor, Eric, I.
Dawn, I.
Kim, I.
Excellent, moving right along. Number nine, we have an appointment of a substitute circulation assistant and substitute librarian. Those positions are standing positions at the library. The director recruits individuals when the pool of individuals runs low and these are filled on an as-needed basis. After the recruitment process, Donald, Donald Cologne is requesting the hiring of Lynn Walsh for the position of substitute circulation assistant and Maureen Mancy and Jean Todeska to the position of substitute librarian. Any questions or comments or a motion?
I, I can do it, Don, if you want.
Perfect.
I move the Board of Selectmen appoint Lynn Walsh to the position of substitute circulation assistant, a fiscal year twenty-four schedule C one as needed position as part of the wage and personnel bylaw with the Kingston Public Library with an anticipated start date of June seventeenth, twenty twenty-four, consistent with the terms of the offer letter.
Second.
All those in favor, Eric, I.
Dawn, I.
Kim, I. That was unanimous.
Yep.
I move the Board of Selectmen appoint Maureen Manny, Maney and Jean Todeska to the positions of substitute librarian, a fiscal year twenty-four schedule C one as needed position as part of the wage and personnel bylaw with the Kingston Public Library with an anticipated start date of June seventeenth, twenty twenty-four, consistent with the terms of the offer letter.
Second.
All those in favor, Eric, I.
Dawn, I.
Kim, I.
That's unanimous as well. All right, we also have an appointment of a temporary assistant harbor master and deputy harbor master. With the recent resignation of Deputy Chief Harbor Master Rick Crager and the harbor master is requesting the board appoint an interim deputy chief harbor master while the recruitment process is completed. Harbor Master Tom Taylor and Police Chief Holmes is recommending the interim assistant harbor master position be filled by current assistant harbor master Glenn Kavicki. If Mr. Kavicki is approved as assistant harbor master, a recommendation to appoint Luke Baron as interim deputy chief harbor, harbor master.
Just a small correction, Eric. I don't think the title is deputy chief. I think it's interim deputy harbor master.
Where did I say that? Yeah.
It says in the description, I don't, I don't think it's deputy chief. Just as a clarification.
I got a nod, yes, from the chief.
That it is or it isn't?
That it is not.
Okay.
I move the Board of Selectmen approve, appoint Glenn Kavicki Assistant Harbor Master and Luke Baron as interim deputy harbor master until the positions are filled permanently.
Second.
All those in favor, Eric, I.
Dawn, I.
Kim, I.
All righty, unanimous. We're moving along. This is what a new chair does.
Sorry. Was I not muted?
Okay, um, meeting minutes, we're going to table this as well because I believe Kim has some edits that, that we want to include on those.
They're not, they're not major edits. I mean, I just don't think we need to bore everyone with them.
Yeah.
Unless we're on a time crunch. Are we on a time crunch?
No.
Okay.
Okay, town administrator report. Do you want me to read through this?
Yeah.
All right. Health insurance, this is financial updates from the town administrator. Health insurance open enrollment has recently completed. Six employees have moved from the traditional plan to the high deductible plan. In addition, nine employees have opted out of town, offered insurance in lieu of the stipend that we started, I think that started last year. And below, he included a chart showing the total tax title receivable amounts due at the end of each fiscal year. As you'll see, the total amount due has increased from 1.045 million to 2.4 million from 2010 to 2024. The former tax title custodian, Carl Pike, tried to reduce his liability by auctioning some properties to get those properties to begin paying taxes once again. Unfortunately, didn't get the support to hold an auction. And we're looking to appoint a, a tax title custodian to, to hopefully auction off some properties during the FY twenty-five year. So as we talked about earlier today, that process will move along next week. Project updates. Through town planner Valerie Massard, an application was submitted for Municipal Americans with Disabilities Act improvement grant in the amount of $66,300 for an ADA self-evaluation and transition plan. If awarded, this grant will update Kingston's existing nineteen ninety-four ADA plan to continue to be eligible for a variety of grants issued by the state. Below are the properties that would be included in the updated plan and there's quite a few, the DPW building, town hall, senior center, animal control and shelter, fire station one, fire station two, wastewater treatment plant, water department, library, font school, Reed Community House building, Adams Heritage Building, the police station, harbor master's office, and the water department pump stations. There's a couple personnel updates. Rick Crager has resigned as a deputy harbor master. Rick served the town in a variety of capacities for the harbor master for over thirty years and the job has been posted. The veterans administrative assistant position will also be advertised shortly, if not already. And that's it. Pretty short update as the town administrator's on vacation. So any Selectmen comments? Kim, do you have anything?
Um, there's a number of updates on the website. I would recommend people taking a look at, like one from the sewer department about the Davis property. There's a long list of the timeline of what's going on there. People might be interested in checking that out. There's some updates on mosquito spraying. If people are curious about that and what's going on there. And I did want to mention that there's Route Three road work scheduled over Landing Road, it says. So just, there's a timeline, but that goes from late May through the end of July. So people should be mindful of that. And there are some water restrictions that are in place, so definitely worth checking out the homepage of the website and taking a look at those updates.
Don, anything from you?
I got nothing this week.
All right, that was a, a nice, short, quick meeting with just three of us. So we will be meeting again next Tuesday and then back onto our regular schedule of every other Tuesday. And just a reminder, we got, we've got quite a bit going on this summer, like we said, the, the music nights sound like they should be a lot of fun and the first one is tonight. Our next regular meetings next week, June eighteenth, and that's it. Would someone like to make a, a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, Eric, I.
Dawn, I.
Kim, I.
And we are adjourned.
Thanks, everyone.